Well, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. We're gonna start off our August 7th City Council meeting. You're located here at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street. Today is August 7th. And to start us off, we're gonna have our invocation led by Josiah Jones with the Stonewater Church. So if you please rise with me and we'll follow that up with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, your word says in Psalm 33 that the counsel of the Lord stands forever, the plans of his heart to all generations. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people whom you have, the people whom he has chosen as his inheritance. God, we come before you tonight, Father, lifting up your holy name, thanking you for this wonderful opportunity to discuss the local government here in Granbury, Texas. Father, I pray, Father, that your name would be above all other names in this room. Father, you are an awesome God, and we pray that we would be biblical instead of political, God. We pray that we would look at everything we do through the lens of Scripture. God, I thank you for our leaders. I thank you for every single young man and woman who stands behind this city, stands behind this nation. God, I pray for discernment and wisdom beyond their years. God, that your word would be delivered tonight in such a way where your name is honored and your name is glorified. God, we thank you for just this opportunity that we had to live in a free country. And God, we never want to forget the ones that are fighting for that freedom. God, would you lift them up? Would you walk among them? God, would you be with their families and loved ones while they're away? And Father, we say all these things. The only name worthy of our praise is his name is Jesus Christ. Amen.
And join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the pledge to the Texas flag, please.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Well, I've got to tell you, folks, there's such a sense of pride and accomplishment throughout our entire community since Dana Volmer landed the gold medals in this year's Olympic Games. And as a result, I feel it's appropriate to make the following proclamation at this Whereas on July 29th, 2012, Dana Volmer, a graduate of Granbury High School, became an Olympic individual gold medal winner by swimming the women's 100-meter butterfly in the 2012 London Olympics. On August 1st, 2012, Dana won a second gold medal in the women's 4x200-meter freestyle relay. And again, on August 4th, 2012, Dana won a third gold medal in the women's 4x100-meter medley relay. And whereas Dana Volmer, while competing with people from all nations during the 2012 Olympics, represented the USA, the great state of Texas, along with the Hood County community, and brought worldwide notoriety to Granbury. And whereas Dana Volmer, at age 12, qualified to compete in the 2000 Olympic trials after learning to swim at the City of Granbury Municipal Swimming Pool, which is now known as the Dana Volmer Municipal Pool. And whereas Dana Volmer, while overcoming issues of personal health, set numerous records throughout her years of swimming competitions and serves as an inspiration to many young swimmers throughout the United States. And whereas Dana Volmer, a hometown hero and an American Olympian, through her accomplishments, has brought cohesiveness to this entire community. Now therefore, I, Ricky Pratt, Mayor of the City of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2012 as Dana Mania Month and call upon the people across the United States to join their fellow citizens in the City of Granbury in recognizing and participating in this special occasion. And I see Nick is out there in the audience. Nick, can I present you with this? Well, folks, as you know, the first City Council of each month, we open it up for your chance to speak to the City Council. Remember, you have three minutes to speak to us. We can't react to the speech other than maybe drop a jaw or something, but we'll take it into consideration for future agenda items. So I've had two speaker cards turned in, maybe a third. The first one I'd like to call up to the podium is Amanda Biltwater. If you would, please go up to the podium, state your name and your address, and we'll start a little clock to see how it works out.
Good evening, Amanda Biltwater. Address 5908 Beacon, Cranbury, Texas.
Start your clock. We're waiting for you to start, ma'am.
Okay. I'm a US citizen. I came a US citizen three years ago. I have been here in Cranbury less than three years, and I came to the United States 1994. I have been a domestic violence victim a long time, and if some people knows what is the nature of domestic violence, it means your own bodies, means your family doesn't help you. They don't wanna talk about it. They don't wanna support you, basically directly, they support some way. And well, that has led in the years, it has led, I am victim for many other crimes. And I was victim already before I came here to Cranbury, and I have also become some victim of some crimes here, but I have reported also to the local PD. I have no get the results yet. What is that basically is it privacy leak, and I just heard you and former secretary call it that in the tort leak. What that, how that is a problem for me, I lost my full-time, long-term job 2003 while I was in Atlanta area. I have been since on and off, but how it go in a regular places, my concentration is not that good when everybody telling about all kind of movements. If I see like a pretty boys or guys, they has starting a story, storytelling about something what is not related at all with the real life. It has ruined my job life. It has ruined my financial life. I have a bankrupt season, and I have barely survived about it, having a little tiny home here in Hood County. That's other story how the home look like, but I have been here that many months and years, I feel this is my home county regardless. I mainly like, many people thinking I talking to New York and other cities, including Washington, including presidents, about this same particular issue. It's all happening, we are taught reading, not direct phone calls or meetings. And that's leads for that I invited Obama here. I see my time is over, but I see this issue is so big. I have done lots of work for this, and then I would like to some point, somebody also for this city and county raises that why this is still on and why it, I have filed many court cases in the Hood, Fulton County, Atlanta, where I lived earlier, any of them has not handled yet. Any of my police reports has not handled what I did in also in the Finland where I came from.
Ms. Biltwater, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have to cut you off.
Thank you.
Next to the podium, I'd like to invite Thane Baker. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
Former Olympian.
Mayor Pratt, council members. My name is Thane Baker. Address 6704 St. John Court, Granbury Address, Hood County Residence. I want to commend the council for the proclamation and what you're going to do for Dana Volmer. I talked to her eight years ago. She's a fine lady, and she deserves it. Also, all of the people that helped her along the way will appreciate this recognition also. This is for her, but this is for the youth of Granbury and Hood County. They will benefit years from now when they're trying to be like Dana. I asked you to use a personal reference. In 1936, a runner came back from 1936 Olympics, Glenn Cunningham. He had just run in Berlin and got a silver medal. He came to my small town in western Kansas. He ran down Main Street, population 1,000. He was my hero. I saw him run down there. I had a dream. Yeah, there are some of my friends, they wanted to be like Hopple Longcaste and Tarzan, but Glenn Cunningham was always my dream. I ran in grade school, I ran in high school, I ran in college, and I achieved some measure of success. We need heroes, and we need dreams. For the youth that will see this celebration that you're going to do for her, and for the youth that try to be like Dana and dream, and they'll work hard to achieve it because what you did, I thank you for them.
Thank you, sir. And looks like our last speaker card is from Karen Roberts. Karen? Please address the council if you would, please.
Sorry. Council members, I'm Karen Roberts. I live at 220 Rents Place Circle in Weatherford, Texas. I'm a Realtor here in town, and I just wanted to make us aware of something that I learned about. There's a movement across our country to make our cities and towns more green, more environmentally friendly, and I think we all want clean water and clean air and nice parks, but some of these organizations have, in my opinion, overstepped their boundaries and are infringing upon personal property owners' rights. An extreme case of this would be in California where they've undammed the waterways, and some of the farmers can no longer irrigate their crops. And if you go to the grocery store, you see there's a lot of things coming from Mexico now. Maybe that's got something to do with it. But of course, our Texas towns have been encouraged by some of these organizations to do special projects, and these organizations don't always support our American Constitution or city charters. So I just want to encourage us that if anyone does come to Granbury with a proposal to be more green, that we might just want to research and make sure that that organization's government philosophies link up with ours, that they're not affiliated with maybe an international organization that promotes communistic and socialistic concepts that prohibit individual property ownership rights in favor of the state controlling things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, that's gonna conclude the open mic section of tonight's agenda. We'll move on down to the consent agenda. Gentlemen, oh, Dee, I need to note for the record, I just looked to my left, that Nan Hewlett is not here, so I'm sure you've already made that notation. At this time, we need to look at approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of July 3rd, 2012. Gentlemen, you had in your packet the minutes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I had one correction.
All right, if you could use the microphone a little, thanks.
I had one correction here.
Can you point it out to us, sir?
Well, it's the last paragraph of the minutes. I don't see any.
Do you know?
Last item.
The very last item?
Yes.
The last item I see on that packet is 12-103. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Last paragraph, we're just talking about councilperson Tyra remove, council approve the $6,500 a month, with the terms being that Granbury Square partners buy the parking lot. See that?
I see that right before the motion.
Yes.
Yes, sir?
And I pulled my motion on that, and it says, I'm gonna get it real quick for you. It's where you had asked, the mayor had asked Mr. Tyra not to have any strings attached, where he was saying if they bought back the million-dollar parking lot, then he would make a motion to give, give them $6,500 a month. And I pulled my motion because council had told me that we couldn't do that.
Right. I recall that. Yes, sir.
But after talking with CML and a couple of local attorneys, we could have done that. And I just want it for the record that we could have, just like any real estate deal, you can buy a house and say, I'll buy this house when you get through with it, if I can sell mine. If you don't sell the house, it's not a done deal. That's what we were referring to. So I just want it for the record.
Mayor, if you've got, if you've got language to bring forth, this is the time to bring forth the language that you want to add.
Well, I just want to put, I wouldn't, I would not have pulled my motion if I knew legally we could have put it in there.
Well, and since you've mentioned my name a lot, Mr. Allen, I want to throw in here, here's what I wrote down, 'cause I've got a couple of things to say about these minutes, and I've already talked to Dee about it beforehand, but I think this will clarify what the attorneys talking to you about down there. I want to clarify that the statement from Attorney Neal, that the motion, I mean, Mr. Allen did not remove his second until the statement from Attorney Neal, not from the statement the mayor made. And so we'd have to ask Dee to go back and listen to that, but if we want to be correct about it, I think that it would probably be best put on hold approving these minutes this time, so she can go back and clarify when Mr. Allen actually made his, when he actually pulled back his second. Because the notes I made here is a statement from Attorney Neal that the motion was out of order or not correct, is not in the minutes and should be added. It was very much said by him that night. Please correct the statement that Allen withdrew his second due to the mayor's comments. Mr. Allen withdrew his second, excuse me, Mr. Allen withdrew his second, the motion obviously at that point in time could not be voted on it. I will have to say that not only did I check with our city attorney, and actually our city attorney made his point that night, but the fact is, if a motion is made and seconded, even if you don't agree with it, the mayor don't agree with it, anybody agrees with it, we have a right to vote on it, okay? Fail, pass, or whatever, if a motion's made and seconded. Obviously, we didn't vote on that at night, 'cause he pulled his second, and he pulled it because the attorney made statements, and they're not in the minutes. I'd like those added to the minutes.
So what you're suggesting is just to add the language that the motion was pulled by Councilman Allen due to a discussion from Counselor Neal?
That's correct.
Is that what I'm understanding?
And then on that same motion, of course, I'm reading these minutes, and I know minutes are summaries, and so I just, it's very sometimes confusing, see, some things are in and some things are out, and I know that's discretionary by the city secretary, and we want to support that. But I think it's very important that Mr. Parsons, in that same discussion, made a motion to approve $4,500, and it was not recorded in these motions, in these minutes, and it died for lack of second. I just feel like it's very important to see when folks make a motion and it dies for lack of second, that it's in fact recorded as well.
It's not recorded.
It's on the tape. And that's what I've seen, I've seen it before, and forgive me, I would, I would like to just move right now, because I want to move into, and Mayor, you make that judgment call. On Section 12-101, on Section 12-101, if you all remember that, that was quite a lengthy actual item. It was the item that had to do with Mr. Sobcek speaking directly to the council, where the city had actually put on the agenda an item to rezone some property, because the person leasing the property wanted to rezone, and the owner flew in from Florida and actually disagreed with that zoning in the council.
Are you able to give me specific language, though, that you want to add or subtract?
Yeah, let me go to it right here.
Because that's where I'm confused by both of these, where you want to add or subtract language. Let's just get that language.
Mayor, we're really at a disadvantage, because there was some very strong language in that 35-minute debate or deliberation, and so I would like to ask the city secretary, or just make a motion that we not approve these minutes, let it go back to city secretary, and look at 12-101 and the section that Mr. Allen brought up, and let's see if we can just add more of the language that will get to the point there. Because one of the things that I see here is that 98% of the language concerning the facts about this rezoning issue are not in the minutes. It was very clear that the tenant did not, was the one partnering with the city, because he couldn't do it by itself. None of that language in there, we talked about that quite a great deal, so I just want to make sure it's in there, people can read the minutes, they can say, okay, this is what's happening there. So I would ask if we table this until the next meeting, so it can be redone. So I'll just move that we table this and let the city secretary look at those two items and clarify them for us. That's the motion, if I can get a second.
If you'll give me just a minute, I'd like to add some language that maybe Councilman Allen and yourself will agree to on that first item that we talked about, okay? And maybe we can push one thing off of the, off of the upcoming agenda. The upcoming agenda, the second meeting of this month, is gonna be a lengthy one, because it includes budget talks and stuff like that, so. So what I'm proposing for you to satisfy the pulling of your motion, Councilman Allen, is that we add the language that following discussion from City Attorney Neal, Councilman Allen withdrew his second to Councilperson Tyra's motion. Would that satisfy that for you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, so you'll see where it's highlighted in that last section. It says Councilperson Allen, add the language that following the discussion from City Attorney Neal, comma, Councilperson Allen withdrew his second. Now, let's, can you tell me a specific in this 101 where you want to add the language that you just stated, that it was because of the tenant and a joint cooperative filing by the city, I believe is the language I sort of heard you say?
Yes, there were two items that came out and actually were deliberated quite a bit, and there was quite a bit of discussion. I didn't see either one of those items mentioned. I would leave that up to the discretion of the city secretary, just to put those two items. One of the items, if you want to be specific, would be that there needs to be more of the deliberation about the owner not wanting the actual zoning change, and in fact--
That's actually stated here in the very first paragraph there.
I thought it was stated in a very--
It states, "The property owners, Mainz and Downey, declined to provide the signature to participate in the zoning change. JA Properties," which is the tenant, "then approached the city and requested that the city rezone the property." So what you're basically saying is stated there in the very first paragraph.
Mayor, the second item is--
All right.
There was a very little mention, or maybe the mention that you just, the one sentence you read, about the fact that Councilman Allen brought up, he brought forward about the unsigned application being posted on the city website. These are items that were very relevant, that discussion. I'm going to just last ask you, Mayor, to make those changes as you see fit, if you will not allow it to go through the discretion of the city secretary, and I won't say another word on it.
Well, the only reason I'm saying that is it does state that their decline to provide the signature, which is required of the property owners on the form, was mentioned in that first sentence I read off to you. Can--
I would draw my motion.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask once again that we approve the minutes as amended. Entertain a motion, please.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, a second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to first item in, under the deliberation agenda. Item number one. Open a public hearing regarding a request of Gaffin Properties LLC to preliminary plat a 2.298 acre tract of the Mylum County School lands survey. Abstract number 348, as lots 1 through 2, Block 1 of the Gaffin addition, and consider and approve said preliminary plat. This property is located southwest of the intersection of South Morgan Street and Spring Street. The property currently accommodates the location of the Wright Henderson Duncan House, which is a recorded Texas historic landmark property and a local Granbury historic landmark. The historic landmark applies to the structure on the northwest corner of the property. Scott, I understand we have a preliminary plat. Can you go into some detail as to what we have on the table here, please, sir?
That's correct, Mayor.
Oh, I did.
Let me get to the right picture graphic there. It's like the images are switched a little bit. Insofar as the preliminary plat for Mr. Gaffin, what's being proposed is a plat application that takes property out of survey, proposes two lots of record. Everybody's familiar with the property. We currently have a landmark residence that's dual-occupied, has a resident small office in the northwestern corner of the property. The proposed property boundaries respect the building setback requirements within the zoning district. We have a litany of variances associated with the application itself. Again, this is a preliminary plat application. We have a variance request of 36A to, regarding the installation of sidewalks. What's being proposed is the applicant and the surveyor have added a note on the plat application, saying at such time that the development commences on Lot 2, Block 1, which would be the undeveloped portion of the property, that they would install the sidewalks at that particular time. That would be the contractor going out, doing the flat work on the site for Lot 2, and then installing the sidewalks for both Lot 1 and 2 at a time.
Can I, can I ask a question regarding that? Is that, so you're also talking along South Morgan Street, that there would be a sidewalk requirement?
It would be along Morgan, correct.
And Spring.
And Spring Street, but not the frontage road of 377. Text dot nix that idea.
Right, okay.
We have a variance request to 31A, 31, regarding the urban standard facility of Spring Street and the dedication of the right-of-way on Spring Street. You can see on your graphic depicted that it varies from roughly 43 feet to 47 feet. A residential roadway right-of-way dedication is 50 feet. The applicant has made a notation in his variance request for P&amp;Z and council consideration that on the far northwest corner of the boundary, there's an existing established tree that you can see just north of the yellow line, that the road kind of wraps around, and that's why you see the indentation in the right-of-way. It basically goes around the tree. So he's in particular claiming a hardship variance to preserve the integrity of the tree. The other issue is Spring is not a through street with a particularly high volume of traffic.
We have a variance request to 3946 regarding centralized water. On the graphic, you can see the location of the water service lines. We do not have any water lines along the 377 frontage road, so the variance applies there, and that portion of Spring Street, I believe. Let me see. Yeah, we have a 12-inch-long Spring Street, and it's that portion of 144 that's a 6-inch line. Correct me if I'm right, Allen, you have a 6-inch line on 144?
Yes.
So the variance would apply to the US 377 frontage and the undersized line of 6-inch-long 144.
the undersized line of six inch along one forty-four, uh, both lots proposed to actually tie on to the, the main and, and have a tap on Spring Street. And then we have a variance to three nine and four five regarding centralized wastewater. We have a si- six inch clay line along Spring and an eight inch, uh, line which meets our standard in the northeast corner of one forty-four, but you can see in the graphic that it basically tapers off at the frontage road intersection. So that variance would apply to the southern portion of one forty-four and then wrap around to the US three seventy-seven frontage road. And then we have a variance to four eight regarding the installation of streetlights. The, uh, variances as applied to the preliminary plat and the preliminary plat were recommended approval by P&amp;Z.
Uh, any questions for staff from council?
Did you say that it had clay?
The clay, the clay line.
How long has it been in the ground?
You know the longevity of that pipe?
If we had to, we could go ahead and explode it, implode it and put that liner in if we had to.
Any other questions for staff?
Uh, green light on. There we go.
It couldn't hear it.
Uh, did you say you had referenced the text dot or have they, have you talked to text dot about the replat and it fits within the schematic of the redo as that intersection?
Text dot was present at the DRC meeting.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, they did not have any outstanding comments with respect to the future planned facility of the interchange between one forty-four and three seventy-seven. They did not request any additional right-of-way that was brought up. The only thing that they brought to the table during the early meetings was that they would limit any kind of drive access on the one forty-four. So you would for lot two to have an access point on the Spring Street, they would prohibit an access point on one forty-four and they may have an egress point onto the three seventy-seven frontage road. That was their only comments.
So they would not allow a, an entrance on one forty-four and, and by the same token then not on the, uh, exit ramp on three seventy-seven?
Just an egress point, not an ingress point, correct.
Regarding the sewer line that's there, is it adequate for commercial development to tie into? I, I'm assuming it-
Yep.
Is adequate?
Yes, sir. Again, depending on how much of the, uh, the water is flowing.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Any comments from the public regarding this public hearing? If not, we're going to close the public hearing. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat as presented along with the request of variances.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Tyra, a second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Brings us down to item number two. This time we will open a public hearing regarding a request of Jonathan Heiser to replat lots one through four of the Meadows North addition as lot one R of the Meadows North addition and consider and approve said replat. This property is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of West Pearl Street and Meadows North Drive. Councilman, I had to ask exactly where that was, it's near the roller rink out there on Pearl Street, so, uh, pardon my ignorance on that, but, uh, oh, uh, you know, at any time, Josh, Joshua, Josiah, you, you don't have to stick around for this. We, I, I know it's intriguing, but I just wanted to let you know, you could walk out at any time, so.
Casey Oliver said he needs to stay a little longer.
So, uh, with that being said, we, I understand that we're replating it to a single lot, it's currently one, uh, it's four different lots located in a zoned light commercial area. So Scott, give us some more input on this and we'll move forward.
That's correct, mayor. It's currently in a light commercial zone. You can see the, uh, four lots of record depicted on your screen. What's being proposed is to create one legitimate lot of record for a building footprint site, uh, vacating those interior lot lines. It's planned for an office building, possibly a medical office building as a part of the, uh, the replat application. There's variances associated with it, uh, one to three nine and four six regarding centralized water main. An existing six inch water line is currently located in Meadows North, so that's where it would apply. You can see we have water to the north on Pearl Street. The, the main that runs along Meadows North to the west of the property is undersized, so that's only really where the variance would apply. They could tie on to either the Pearl Street or the Meadows North if capacity, uh, is available on that six inch line. Three nine and four five regarding the upsides of sewer on Pearl Street and cannot extend sewer along Meadows North. If you look again toward, uh, Meadows North, you can see where the truncated line, that round line stops just to the southwest corner of the platted boundary. They have available sewer as alongside service, uh, across the street on a six inch line to a PVC or you could see they have an easement available or they could use the right-of-way and tie in either to that point with a service line on Meadows North or tie in to the east, uh, two lots over in the right-of-way. So they have connection points, there's no need really for them to the, to bear the cost of extending the sewer line further north on Meadows North. And then lastly, we have a variance request to three one eight and four ten to not improve West Pearl to an urban standard facility. P&amp;Z and C staff recommend approval of the plat as presented.
Any questions for staff regarding this one, gentlemen?
Go back to that picture and tell me a little bit more about the, is that a sewer line that runs to the right of the property there? Right down the middle of a, a lot next door to it, which would be, huh? It's over, is it on the property line? I was just wondering, one, I was wondering why it's going underneath the apartments and two would be that, uh, it looks like we would render that property to the right there, just, uh, basically useless, right?
That blue-
Okay.
The- Are you referring to the blue line?
To the blue line, yeah, that sewer line that runs into the apartment. It's in the back there.
You started to say something, Scott.
Now, unfortunately, these, uh, the layer coverages that we have on water sewer don't have the same level of accuracy on our GIS system as the other newer layers, so that's why the water sewer lines are like somewhat-
You think it runs underneath the apartment?
No.
And, and there is, uh, work afoot to clear up some of our GIS, uh, locators, so. In the future, we shall have better representation. But, uh, any other questions for staff regarding this? Anybody from the public would like to speak regarding this public hearing? This is your chance. We're going to close the public hearing, entertain a motion to approve a replat of lots one through four of the Meadows North addition as lot one R of the Meadows North addition. Gentlemen?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We have a motion by Mr. Allen, a second please. Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion? All in favor of the approval of the replat, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, along with the variances, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, so item number three, present the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen fiscal year budget to council and set the date, time and place for a public hearing on said proposed budget. Understand we have a bit of a presentation to be seen?
Yes.
I'll walk it through.
And, uh, Scott, you have that in front of you?
Do you have a copy of this?
Right. Gentlemen, you have a paper copy as well, it was presented on the dais. Uh, just for a little background, the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget was delivered to the city council. On August first, two thousand and twelve, a copy of said budget was also delivered to the office of the city secretary and is available for inspection by the public during regular business hours. The budget is also available on the city's website at www.granberry.org. In order to comply with public hearings regard, requirements and publication deadlines, a public hearing on the fiscal year two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget is scheduled to be held at the city council meeting on August twenty-first, two thousand and twelve, at six o'clock at city hall. That's here at one sixteen Westbridge Street. Ah, we're ready, good timing.
Uh, just working, walking through, can we flick to the first one? Uh, just wanted to go through, you know, we spent two days, the council spent two days going through the budget. We went through every department basically or presented every department's results and, uh, talked through many issues for two days. This is just simply a very simple, uh, summary of what we discussed in those two days going forward, but the first one shows the sales tax growth for the city of Granberry. As you can see, um, two thousand, you can see that two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, we made a real comeback and in fact, in two thousand and twelve, the projection is on the run rate right now that we're going to be ahead in sales tax ahead of two thousand and seven. We haven't quite hit the two thousand and eight mark now. The turn down really happened for Granberry in February two thousand and eight. You can just like, see the numbers drop when you look at month to month and boom, all of Barnett Shell moved out that, that month. It was amazing, they all just packed up and left. And so, uh, it still grew and you're still right at the edge of two thousand and eight, but we've had a tremendous comeback in our sales tax because now we are at the levels nearly of two thousand and eight without the Barnett Shell, okay? And so, uh, we're feeling pretty good about the progression of the sales tax. Moving on forward, you see here that we are staying pretty close, there's been some growth as well, um, this year in sales tax, how are we compared to other people? We're very close. Some people are more, some people are less. Uh, some of them have, uh, more gas, which helps with sales tax as well. And so we're looking good versus other cities. We do a comparison and you see, this is now, this is how the comptroller, this is off the comptroller's page and they compare it, uh, by calendar instead of by fiscal year. What I was showing before was fiscal year, this is by calendar. But we're up eight percent right now in Granberry over the prior year for two thousand and twelve over two thousand and eleven. Our avalorum values on the next page? Okay. Our avalorum values have in fact made another comeback, we're up eight percent this year in terms of projections from the, uh, chief appraiser, from the appraisal office. So once again, avalorum values are back up, which is also good. In fact, we're going to be, as you can see, we're right there even above two thousand and ten. We've made a real comeback. We had declines in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, but once again, we're back up above two thousand and ten. And this is just, this particular, um, schedule just simply shows the growth rates in the past years versus, um, this year budgeted for two thousand and thirteen. And those are the certified numbers from the chief appraiser, that's actually what's going out on the tax statements. This, just to remind everyone, how we have handled our tax rate, our tax rate has continued to drop from a forty, from forty-four cents back in two thousand and four, we are now down to point four oh three nine. We continue to reduce our tax rate over the last ten years. This is a comparison of tax rates for other cities around us. You can see once again, we're the lowest tax rate in many cities, Kennedale, Cleburne, Burleson, White Settlement. If you own the same house you own here in Kennedale, you'd pay almost twice as much in avalorum taxes as you pay in Granberry. Once again, that's a, that's a compliment to the council who has made that happen. Looking at the certified tax rates that have come back to us, the current avalorum tax rate is point four oh three nine per hundred dollar value. The current rollback tax rate was computed at point four seven oh two. What that means is we are lower than the rollback rate. If the rollback rate was lower, we would have to look at lowering our tax rate, but, uh, we in fact, uh, are already lower than our rollback rate. And the current effective tax rate is point three nine nine three. That is what it would take to raise the same amount of taxes on existing homes if that was to be the rate that we would, um, need to charge if we were only going to raise the same amount of avalorum revenue. Looking at hotel occupancy tax, once again, you can see that tourism is definitely back because we, there's only been one year in two thousand and eight that we had hire coming in, we're going to come in around five hundred and forty-six thousand. We've held it in this budget process, we've held it the same. And once again, that's without Barnett Shell. Barnett Shell was here during the higher rates and they were staying in our hotels and it was a big impact. Looking at the, uh, you know, I'm a one-page guy, if I can't put it on one page, I'm not doing my job. So here is the whole budget on one page, I know you can't read it, but the only way you can balance a budget is to have it on one page. I just wanted to remind the council that, um, and when we went through all of the components of the budget, the budget, the general fund had a surplus of fifty-eight thousand, utility fund had thirty-six thousand, everything else is handled through transfer funds, which is zero. The reason I show you that is I want to work through the reconcilment of the items of where we were then versus where we are today. So you see the fifty-eight thousand on the general fund and all the changes really happened on general fund. Um, we did get the certified base come back in, so we had to lower our avalorum revenue by fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars. That requires a one percent reserve decrease, the charter requires us to put one reserve down, so we had to add a hundred and forty-five dollars into our, or we added one forty-five into our, um, budget. During the process, the city, city attorney removed the request for administrative assistance, which saved us forty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. We removed the financing for the skate park, we moved it to the bond, um, which saved us eighteen thousand, one seventy-nine of actual payment in this particular budget. We moved the moments and time trail to two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, we found out that, uh, the, um, this is an eighty-twenty bond and that text dots really, most of that construction's going to happen in the next year. So we moved the revenue out and we moved the expense, uh, moments and time trail capital to two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. Uh, some impact to cert, so that got us to a sixty-five thousand, that was the impact to surplus, sixty-five, seven, sixty-eight. We had some minor changes that we found as we were going back and doing just double checks, we found ninety-nine dollars in Texas workforce adjustment. We had, uh, a FICA adjustment of two hundred and thirty, a TMRS adjustment of four hundred and ninety-two dollars, workers' comp adjustment of forty-five. All total, now we are sitting with a current budgeted surplus of a hundred and nine thousand, four forty-six, which is the one pager you now see it's been adjusted and that's what we have done since we talked, uh, last time. So that's, this is now the new proposed budget. Uh, want to hit on some of the major expense adjustments or assumptions that were in the budget. We've asked for a three percent salary increase for personnel. We projected unfreezing, upgrading and adding some positions, which we discussed. Capital expenditures were around four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the utility fund had five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of capital expenditures, which was offset by two hundred and eighty-five thousand of use of impact fees. The general fund increased four percent, the utility fund increased ten percent, tourism fund one percent, airport fund nineteen percent. Now, I go through just real quickly, the general fund had software licensing requirements, some additional maintenance that we put in and, and increase to the economic development corporation. Uh, utility fund was a power purchase and the reason utility fund goes up, we're looking at power, power costs, it has nothing to do with staff or anything else, but that power purchase can be a big, um, increase. The bank card fees, more and more people are using online to pay their bills and we have to pay more and more bank card fees, that's a plus, they don't have to come in to the city hall to make their payments, they're doing it online, but it costs us money for them to pay online. We have more maintenance that we're needing to do on some of the utility infrastructure and of course, we, uh, did the adjustment for the franchise fee. Tourism fund one percent, I didn't discuss. The airport fund, now this is going to be a continued increase in expenditure for us because of our real focus on developing and expanding the airport. But the increase in airport fund was increased fuel expense, but that fuel expense is going to be offset by increased revenue. We are having a tremendous increase in the usage of our airport and just looking at expenses, the expense went up, but the revenue went up more, okay? So the net would have been positive. We also are going to have an additional rent grant, whoop, ramp grant. A ramp grant is a annual grant that if we spend fifty thousand dollars, we automatically get fifty thousand dollars from text dot aviation. So we put that in this year, we're going to use that to build a hangar, which will generate more revenue. This is a very positive revenue impact, but it increases your airport fund expenditure nineteen percent, but the revenue once again will be greater than the increase. Talking about positions- Talking about positions, it was time to increase our service level in terms of, we had cut back dramatically in 2007, 2008. We had frozen positions. We had some groups that were working with two people and having to go back and forth to do, they were losing productivity and efficiency. We are going to add a floater to help offset some of the overtime that we were generating throughout, throughout the city hall. We're going to add a sales associate for Channel 27. We're going to add a PT light equipment operator, a new master tech for the building maintenance group, a new custodian, and a new tech person, all in building maintenance. In the utility fund, we're going to add a third meter reader. Frozen, we're going to unfreeze a water treatment, water plant operator one, a lineman in the electric. We're going to unfreeze a lineman, first class, and we're going to unfreeze a, in the wastewater collection, a utility equipment operator. In communication marketing, we're going to add a visitor center attendant down here Monday through Wednesday. Our visitor center is not manned. We try to handle it through our human resource and communications group, but we're going to go ahead. That was a criticism that we got, basically, from a committee that was talking about our support for some of the events. I think it was valid, so we put that in there as a visitor center attendant Monday through Wednesday. And then, it's a part, it's a part-time position. But also, we're going to add a group service technician for the conference center as well to handle the increased volume of conference center. That very quickly is our budget. I'll be happy to answer the question.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to set the public hearing for the 2012-2013 fiscal year budget to be at City Hall, located at 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas, on August 21st, 2012, at 6:00 PM.
Mayor, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
You said we had a bunch on the agenda coming up that night?
This, this is going to be one of those topics.
Yes. Do you think we should do it at 4:00? And try to work it out? Or you think?
No, I think.
We don't have that many items.
I think we can get through in a relatively fair amount of time.
Okay.
But, once again, I, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to set the, for the public hearing for the 2012-2013, as mentioned earlier, on August 21st, at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parson. Need a second on this, please. Second by Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion or questions regarding the budget hearing? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. It will be posted in the paper and online. Item number four, discuss the proposed 2012-2013 fiscal year tax rate for the city of Granbury. Take record vote on this tax rate as well. I would like to mention that kudos need to go out to our city manager for uncovering an accounting discrepancy, which would have impacted the city and county drastically if the rollback rate had been published prior to a discussion by our city managers with the tax appraisal district. So, thank you, Wayne. We appreciate that, and I'm sure the county did too. As I said, this is about establishing the fiscal tax rate for the year 2012-2013. You heard from the city manager that the effective tax rate is .39926 per $100 valuation. That is below our current rate of .4039. At this time, council, would you like to talk about this? This is, oh, I'm sorry. Our city manager would like to talk about it.
With our, with our surplus that we have in the budget of around 100,000, if you lowered the rollback, or if you lowered the current tax rate from .4039 to .3993, I believe the impact's around 43,000, correct? So, it is available to you probably if you want.
And mayor, when you bring open this discussion, you know, it's, and I appreciate, you know, people saying, "Well, we lowered the tax rate." But if you'll look at the graph that was shown by our city staff, the fact is, the appraisals went up, so there was much more money coming in, so we've never actually given ourselves less money. So, with that said, I make a motion that we move to the current effective tax rate, set that rate at 3993, and give that money back to the taxpayers. That's my motion.
We have a motion to take on the effective tax rate of .3993.
I second that. Mayor, I do have a question.
We have a second by Councilman Allen. Now, we'll open it up for discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Allen?
What does that equal to, Wayne, say, for a house of $200,000 value? I'm glad we're doing it, but I just curious.
Well, if it weren't me to pull out. I have to do that, I'm sorry.
A little bit, alright.
Yeah, it would, it would not be, it'd be $80.
Better than going up. That's it.
It's not a big impact, but it does take us below the 40 cent mark. It, it.
It does take our earnings down 43,000.
Yeah, it is a $43,000 hit to the general fund.
So, assuming we have 4,000 homes, that's why I'm standing around $10.
Would this help us in our bonds? Do you want to issue bonds? Would it reduce that?
Well, I don't think it would hurt us. It's not that small. I mean, it doesn't, that actually gives us more room. The way they look at it's a little different, because you have more capacity. So, if you went and borrowed money and had a lower tax rate, they would look at it as the fact that, the fact we're much lower than most of the entities around us, they would see that as capacity the way you have it.
I think that, that cuts woefully short.
Really?
I think we ought to be more like 4.5 cents, which is basically the.
So, where are you proposing that we go to?
Well, in this current budget year, you're going to end up with a $450,000 surplus after we've expended quite a bit on capital improvements. I would suggest that we move capital improvements considered for in 2013 up into 2012, about $450,000 worth there, by flattening that reserve, and then take that 4.5 cent reduction in the tax rate going forward, and you would still add about the same amount to the reserve balance. Currently, we have in excess of $5 million in cash sitting in our funds that are available. We also have a debt-to-expense ratio, or a coverage ratio of like, a reserve ratio of 60%. Normally, the requirements from the financial institutions, that'd be about 25%. So, we have, but we have a huge reserve balance in the general fund. I understand probably that a part of what these revenues that we're looking at are going to be an increase, or, excuse me, a change in the way that we build our utilities. And those changes will result in probably a little pickup of income to us, and so I suggest that we reduce the tax rate by 4.5 cents to give that back to the taxpayer to ease some of the burden of the increase in the utility costs that are going to be pushed out. And at no cost to the value of the reserve funds that we have available, pushing money from general fund over to the utility fund, so that as we move forward with our consideration for new plants, new products, that we would have money, more reserves than the utility fund. So, I would like to see the rate reduced by 4.5 cents.
Which puts us at .36 per $100 valuation. Am I figuring that right, sir?
Yes. That each, as I understand it, each, each penny in the rate has about $100,000, $105,000 effect.
Ava, can you do a rough calculation as to how that affects?
Mayor Wash, he's doing the calculations.
Say that, $400,000.
And I would also submit that when you look at your debt coverage ratio, which is the excess of ad valorem taxes over your debt, that number is like 100, is 1.5 million dollars, which leaves us with a ratio of 1.5. So, it will have no real effect on our debt coverage ratio or on our ability to pay our debts in the short run.
I have a, I have a question for our city manager in response to what Mr. Parson is recommending here. In light that we have a motion on the floor and a second, I wanted to ask you.
We're in discussion right now.
Yes, Mr. City Manager. As to everything that you heard, and it always really concerns me when we go through a budget workshop, we spend days and hours working with staff to get to a place, and you know as well as I do that we've talked for hours, and this council's been involved with it too, about our electric rate. And, and to sit here and to give the thought process to people that we've got all the cash we need, somewhat concerns me because we do have to deal with two funds, the general fund versus the utility fund. And so, I would just ask our council to please, let's lean upon our financial experts here, and the fact is, I think that what Mickey proposes could be done, and he said it well, we could flatten the $400,000. Spend it now. Spend it, spend it, spend it. I'm saying that we're approaching, in the next few months, and staff's already working, and you all have heard this, an opportunity to do something with the rate studies. Our people in our city who are using our electric are getting hammered. I gave you a great example at the budget workshop. A restaurant, Chick-fil-A in town, 13 cents a kilowatt hour, everybody else in the Metroplex, 4 cents to 8 cents is max. We need to do something with our rates. Please don't give the money away here tonight. Let's give it back in our utility fund, and let's think outside the box instead of saying, "Let's spend it now," because what you're doing, you're saying, "Let's spend it now, that'll make the budget next year look easier, and we don't need tax rate." I'm with you. I mean, I see the 4 cents.
I don't think he's talking about spending it now.
I don't think you understand, Mr. Tyre.
I understand that we have a general fund.
You don't understand, Mr. Tyre. I'm sorry. You don't understand.
Well, let me ask you, may I ask you a question? May I ask you a question?
Please. You have $2.5 million in utility fund, sitting in your utility fund. Now then, my assumption is, is that the rate study that has been brought forward by staff will be approved, and that expense, or that increased revenues, which may not show up as an increased rate, but it reduces the electrical rate, is going to show up as some people's houses, is increases in their total utility cost. I'm suggesting that we can take a reduction in the property tax and offset that increased utility rates to our citizens. So, it's a transfer, basically, of the cost out of the general fund into, or, excuse me, in excess of the revenues out of the general fund back into the utility fund. Now then, the reason for spending the money today is because you have a $450,000 surplus coming out of 2012 that's projected, alright? What are you going to do with that $450,000? Add it to the 60% that's already there, that's where, in essence, our city procedure only calls for 25%, whereas financial markets only call for 25%? So.
Well, on that note, I'd like to refer you to item number six, which is coming up, which we talked about some of those.
We're going to spend some of that. We already made plans with the staff over two days of a budget workshop, and for you to throw this at us now, and I will, I appreciate what you're saying.
Hey, just, just so you know, he's got a right to talk, and if, if he feels like this is the time to flatten it out and not have any surplus, that's his prerogative.
Allow me to rebuttal.
May I refer you to the chart that showed the reduction in the property tax rate here? Remember that one? I've been here on those councils, and I've been the one that supported that, and we've been successful with those reductions.
Mickey, and.
Mayor, may I? Go ahead.
Hang on.
Let me say one thing, and that is, the increased revenue that, that was going to come out of the rate study was going to go into 400,000 to increase the surplus. It was not going to be used, if you remember, we were going to create more surplus to use as a reserve or a water.
Exactly. I've not touched the utility fund, have I?
No. You're not discussing utility fund.
I've not touched anything in the utility fund. That, that still stays the same. There's $400,000 surplus there.
Councilman, I would like to point out that we do have other projects on the horizon. We have a sewer plant, we have water plant. They will all need to be supported by some general fund dollars. You can't count on just the monies that are currently located in the utility fund. So, I, I understand your compassion about lowering the rate to help, help the consumer out there adjust to the fact that they are going to be hit. Some people will be hit with some sort of a, a utility rate hike.
That's exactly right, and I'm against that.
And, and as a result, I can understand your compassion for them and for me and you, we're all, all of us that are on that utility issue, but I would, would like to remind everybody, we have a motion on the floor, a motion to take on the effective tax rate. We have a second. We're still under discussion. So, are you making a proposal that there be an amendment to taking on the effective tax rate?
I'm calling the question, mayor.
Can I have a couple of questions for the manager first?
Um, yes.
In discussing this tax rate, item number five, where we're having to pay $65,000 to the Granbury Theater Company to keep that going, is that in the, the budget that we're looking at, or the numbers you just gave us?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And item number six, we're going to purchase, we're going to approve capital expenditures for the current year for some items.
Well, that impacts what you're saying about current surplus.
Okay, well, I understand that. But you've got a $750,000 surplus total, and you're going to spend on these items in number seven, or number six, you're going to spend about 300,000, because you're going to have $450,000 left over. Now then, let me ask you a question. On item number seven, considering approved the purchase of the storage air network, is that included in item six?
Yes.
Is that, okay. So, so really, all the other items that are here are already in the budget and accounted for. So, the current year, when we're in the current year, based on where we're sitting right now, we're going to have a surplus of $450,000. Is that in addition to the 1% required?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're going to have a 450,000 plus a 1% required addition to your reserve, and you're going to take that ratio to 65% or something like that, when you only need 25%. And I can't understand now why Mr. Tyre doesn't want to pass that tax advantage along to the citizens of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Parson. All right.
Do you have a chance to rebuttal, or are you going to let that end? You want to let it end on that, or you're going to give me a few minutes?
We'll, we'll let it end on that.
Question, you called for the question, Mr. Tyre.
You called for the question, and now I hear, hear a second from Mr. Parson on your call for the question, so.
You want to let it?
Let's go ahead and end with that. We have a motion on the floor to take on the effective tax rate. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, I need a, I, I need a show of hands because I'm hearing only two people say nay. So, show of hands on all who want to take on the effective tax rate, please. We have two. All who want to take on, who are opposed, please raise your hands. That's two guys. I get to vote.
You get to vote tonight, mayor.
Wow.
You earned your money tonight.
You know, I, I've been a proponent for taking on the effective tax rate for, ever since I've sat up here, because I feel it's best to stay with what you know is positive and what you know that's currently there. So, my vote is for taking on the ad valorem effective tax rate. So, with that said, that, the motion passes. Please make a note that two council members were opposed, Councilman Perkel and Councilman Parson. Thank you. Brings us down to item number five. Discuss and consider an agreement with Granbury Theater Company agreeing to pay the theater company $65,000 to help defray costs for theater rental and production licenses, and providing that the theater company be, will pay the city 25% of all profits, but only after it first covers its expenses. Councilman, you were, you hopefully received a revised agreement in, as an email, and also on the dais here, you will see a revised agreement outlining, mentioned by Councilman Allen. Mr. Allen, can you highlight what it was that you brought to our attention during a staff meeting, sir?
Will.
It had to do with the overall cost being met, I believe, and.
It said that in the first one we got, which Stewart's taking it out of here.
Will, steer everybody's eyes to section five, please. That's where the change occurs.
Yeah. It was saying that, that the, they would have to meet 300, they'd have to make $302,000 before the city would ever get to 25% of the profit. And so, we took that out. The other thing, Mayor, that I kind of questioned a little bit is, is where it says that the, they must achieve 50, 50% capacity.
Yes, that was in the original.
I, I know, and I thought it was going to be out, because if you make a profit, what difference does it make if it's 10 people in there or 1,000? We're, the city or the taxpayers is looking at it as profit off of per show. So, I didn't understand that. The 302,000 has been taken out.
And the 50% would generate the revenue to break even, so that's why we said.
Yeah, but what would happen there, Wayne, if, say that there was 49%, and they made a profit, we don't get anything of that?
Right.
That's correct.
Well, I think if the city could get 25% of profit, that's just my opinion.
Well, but if they did 49%, they wouldn't have a profit. They would be, they would. They would be, they would not be covering their costs.
No.
They'd have a loss.
We're not getting 25% anyway till they make a profit.
Right.
So it wouldn't make a little difference on that, Wayne, if it was 50% full, or 30% full, or 90% full. We're still talking about profit, right?
No. You don't make a profit till you hit 50%.
50% seating is where their break even point is calculated.
They can cover their costs until they got to 50%.
And that's per show. That's what we've, what we've changed the language to read, is per show, that they reach a 50% seating capacity, and they indicate that, at that point, that there is a profit for the production. Each prof, each production has its production costs, and it's calculated that until they hit 50% of their seating capacity for the run of that program, that they do not see profit. And we're, and you're right. I mean, it could be a 49%. They could bar you from sitting down and keep you out.
Yeah, I know.
And as a result, they wouldn't have to pay. But I don't think that would happen. I think they're going to allow us to inspect their books through this entire occupation of the Granberry Live Building and the interim of moving into the Opera House.
Does this include the concession stand also? Okay.
I'm sorry, you say that again, I missed it.
I was curious if we were getting a percent of the concession stand on profit also.
Andrew Shooker said yes.
Yes, I'd like to hear whatever you're saying, because you're looking good, by the way. You got your hair spuffed up and everything, looking good.
I didn't recognize it.
So once we achieve 50%, which is the break even point, that's including ticket sales and concessions.
Yeah, okay.
So ticket sales would be a certain percentage of that 50%, and concessions would be a certain percentage. It breaks down that ticket sales are 89% of the total dollar figure, and concessions are 11%. Once we hit 50% of capacity, then we break even, and that's when we start profit sharing.
I have a question for Andrew.
All right, go ahead.
Andrew, and it's my opinion that this will be passed with flying colors here tonight, so can you tell us what the first show will be out here in this public venue tonight?
Sure. We're thrilled. I mean, we think Granberry Live is a wonderful opportunity. I think it buys us a lot of time going forward to get the Opera House finished and done properly. We're doing a production which will open up with called The Secret Garden, which is a musical piece. It's a great, great show. I've done it a few times. Then we do the Fiddler on the Roof production after that, Forever Plaid after that. We've got a full season of shows starting on September 20th, closing down on June 1st, which is when we kind of are hoping to get into the Opera House. So we feel pretty good.
Thank you.
First one will be September 20th?
September 20th.
Andrew, I do have one question about the 6,500, or maybe this is to Wayne, but I know in our meeting the other morning, Monday, we were talking about the 39,000. That's the buy, to buy the production.
The actual rights to the...
The rights to the production.
We're supplying him cash flow right now. He has the cash flow.
Absolutely. No, I understand. But with a 39, that will count for so many months of, like, six months or whatever.
Six months.
Now, if, if we get this built by February the 1st, hey, we're just thinking out loud.
We're hopeful. We're hopeful too, absolutely.
But let's say it happens before the 10 months. It stops whenever you move into new deal.
That's right.
Okay.
That's, that's exact language in the contract.
Yeah, well, that's the way I understood it, or read it.
And the reason we wrote this contract the way we did, if he has the same success with his shows he had with 1776, we get a 65,000 back.
We'll get money, yeah.
That will cover our 65,000.
Well, we can only wish him the best.
It is a net zero.
We were tremendously successful on that production, but certainly I would like to temper that and say that there were a lot of things that came into confluence, right? We were in a good location, it was the right period of time, and it was the right show. You won't always make those right decisions, you just can't. We ended up with a very high capacity number, which we were thrilled with, but it was only eight performances, as opposed to on The Secret Garden, we have 20. The great thing is, is we'll have something on the square Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Saturday evening for the rest of the time, right? So we'll know that, I mean, the weekends are going to be covered.
I'm reading a motion on it.
Well, first off, I want to point out a correction in the spelling of theater. When you're dealing with a professional live theater company, it should be an R-E, not an E-R. We're not going to the movies. So if you could please make that correction in the actual contract that we bring forward, I'd love to see that. I believe that's even the way you correctly spell your company. Is that correct?
That's our name, yeah. Granberry Theater with an O.
We just want to make sure of that. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to accept the revised agreement between the City of Granberry and the Granberry Theater Company not to exceed 65K for a period of no more than 10 months of operating within the, while operating within the Granberry Live Building. As such, donation to the fine arts does serve as a public purpose in allowing a venue for entertainment to continue during the renovation of the Opera House building.
So moved.
Those magic words, just so you hear, once again, it's, this donation serves a public purpose. Okay, so who gave me the motion?
I did.
Councilman Allen, the second came from Councilman Perkel. Any further discussion regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Parson.
I'd like to say that I probably will support this, but I must express my disappointment in this council's ability to get the Opera House finished. We'd promised June 1. We had told the public in January, February, that we had a plan that would work. Here potentially exposing the city to expenditure of $65,000 that may hopefully get recovered. Last council meeting, we approved an item where we continued to employ Mr. Burris, which I agree with, but we're in essence having to spend there an extra $30,000. So somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000, just an operating cost, are being expended because we didn't complete the Opera House by June 1. Now then, as we go into that, then we're going to really get worried, because we're going to have to look at the numbers and the dollars that we've got to spend. We've already know that our lowest number right now is about a million and a half. We've already approved another $250,000 out of another deal, so you're probably looking at about a shortfall of $750,000 to a million dollars on getting this project done. So wish us luck.
As I said, we've got a motion on the floor, and let's proceed on with the motion. All in favor of the motion to accept the revised agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moves us to item number six. Discuss and approve the purchase of capital assets, including, but not limited to buildings, improvements, equipment, and park improvements, utilizing the projected surplus of current 2011, 2012 fiscal year dollars, of which you heard Mickey mention was $750,000. During a recent budget review, the council was, had instructed the finance company, finance department, to move forward and purchase or invest in the following capital assets using the current fiscal year dollars, one of which is a disaster recovery network system in the amount of $90,000. Relocation of a fire training center, which is going to run approximately $125,000. The purchase of three zero-turn mowers to the tune of $24,000. The construction of a dog park to the tune of $20,000. Extending a patio on the back of the Gordon House at the newly acquired Langdon Center, $30,000. And improving some sidewalks on the square, a small budget, and if you ask me, of $30,000 to allocate towards that. This comes to a total of approximately $319,000 to be utilized out of the surplus funds in the tune of $725,000 to be utilized. At this time, we'd entertain a motion to authorize the finance department to utilize the existing surplus dollars from the fiscal year 2011, 2012, to purchase or invest in the following capital assets, and to authorize the mayor to sign agreements relating to those smaller items that do not total more than $50,000.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Allen. Need a second, please.
That motion was...
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Councilman Tyra. Need a second, please.
Will, I'm on a second.
Oh. Wow.
I'd like discussion.
We will. We have a second by Councilman Allen. Now, any discussion regarding this? Councilman Perkel?
The improvements on the sidewalks on the square?
Yes, sir.
Those that have been around here as long as I have, remember the time we've tried to do this before, and we've come to the fact that they have the native rock on the sidewalks, and you try to remove it, and you're almost decapitated by, you know, people on the property. My question, have they agreed to repair these sidewalks in the past? We even had a lawsuit once, we paid $50,000 in insurance compensation, $20,000, so my question is, are we going to remove any of the rocks, or do you know?
Well, that was the discussion we had, that the sidewalk, in many cases, is rough and causing some of our patrons to have problems walking on it, and there was concern about liability for them tripping and falling on that rock.
Yeah, I agree, but have they agreed, the people that own the rock?
No, we didn't approach anything until we talked about...
We haven't discussed the dollars yet.
Okay.
Who owns the sidewalk?
That's a discrepancy that has been long ventured, that the landlord on certain distance out, city on other path, but I don't think it's ever truly been given a definition of who owns what.
Stewart?
Well, what we have, though, is a discussion about improving the sidewalks and utilizing some dollars to use that.
I understand, Mayor, but I'd hate to authorize $30,000 for a lawsuit.
Well, we're just allocating those dollars out of this fiscal year that could be utilized for improving the sidewalk. We're not, we can't move forward with it until it goes through the proper legal channels, anyway.
We can take it out. That's not an issue.
I mean, all it takes is a pen.
I'll call the question, because I'm the one that threw the wrinkle in it.
I think it'd be nice to have it, to get it.
We needed to discuss these things.
Well, and personally, I don't think $30,000 will improve the entire length of a block of sidewalk. It's only going to improve certain rocky areas of the sidewalk, and probably only on one side of the square at this time. All right. So with that being said, all in favor of authorizing the finance department to utilize existing surplus funds, and authorize the mayor to sign agreements that are in the amount of less than $50,000? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us down to item number seven. As mentioned in that capital asset use of dollars, there is an item for $90,000. So what we have before us is consider and approve purchase of storage area network, including associated hardware installation, configuration, and training services from CDWG for a total price of $90,000, and authorize the mayor to sign statement of work contract. The reason for this, gentlemen, is that we have no real storage backup system. Last year, the city went down in their IT department for a period of five to seven days that I can recall, and it could have been longer, and this would be catastrophic. Now that we've gone to having our communications, which is all of our phone systems are now routed through the computer system as well, we could lose all communications, not even a phone line functional within the city. This, purchase of this hardware installation and configuration gives us a reliable backup, and I'm going to ask Tony Toll, our IT expert, to elaborate on why this... I understand we're one of the few remaining communities to not invest in this kind of stuff, so it's pretty important to have, isn't it?
Yeah, the sans technology's been around for a lot of years. The issue in the past has always been cost. The costs on disk have dropped dramatically over the last seven, eight years. And where this really comes in, I can go to the next slide, it's a completely different architecture as far as how your servers access the files that are stored. We have a couple of NAS, what are called network attached storage devices currently, along with what's called direct attached storage on the servers. And in the old days, that worked very well. You had to have, if you lost a server, you would have to restore your backup to a new server when it arrived, and you would be down until you got the new hardware in. With the virtualization technology that now is in place at almost everywhere, including us, all of our servers are virtualized. The virtual environment allows you to take advantage of the sans technology, because it's, a sans is a device that operates at the block I/O level. It doesn't operate at the file level, and as you can see from the diagram, you're actually going through a switch from the servers to get to the disk. You're not actually going across the network. So it operates on a completely different protocol. So what this does is, in the virtualization world, I currently have two identical servers. On those two identical servers, I have direct attached storage, and I'm using that storage in the virtual world. When we implement the sans, what will happen is, is I will have two servers, one will be the production, the other one will be the failover server, which are accessing the storage on a completely different device that's attached fiber optically to the network, so that if this server fails, the virtualization automatically switches it over to the second server. So the end user at the desk doesn't even know it's happened. So you, and we invested in these servers a year ago when we ran into this issue. The problem was, is we didn't have the extra money at that time to invest in the sans to leverage that investment that we've got in that hardware and in the virtual environment.
Now, in non-geek speak, are we just saying that it's a better way of backing up stuff and a quicker way of recovery?
It, it's an automatic way. It's not a quicker way, it's automatic. You don't, there's no intervention.
But your server can still go down, though, right?
Server could still go, I could still have a server go down, but because I have an identical server sitting there waiting in what they call high availability disaster recovery mode, if this one goes down, this one picks up automatic.
Immediately.
Immediately.
Yeah.
So, and the other, the one other advantage I do want to tell you is, is in a sans, your access is much faster. So a lot of our encode applications, the applications that we run on the servers, the performance on those is going to go up because of this technology. So you also gain the fast access from the sans as well.
And that affects our PDF downloads and transferring of that kind of stuff.
No, it really affects more the encode, utility billing, the court, the applications that we run on the servers.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff regarding this particular item?
Tony, you know how sharp I am on a computer.
Well, I thought, I thought you're like the lead tech guy up there, aren't you, Councilman Allen?
I told them I needed nine hours of teaching, everybody else got 30 minutes. These little gray boxes in here, is that what you're talking about, adding to that? The one on the...
The one on the right-hand side that have little circles?
Yes.
Yeah, those little circles represent the disk that are actually in that storage attached network.
In a little square-looking box.
The little square-looking box that's in the circle, that's, that's supposed to represent what's called block I/O, and...
Just switch here, is that...
Yeah, it's a different way of accessing the, the storage.
Yeah, I don't know anything about it, but it's pretty own paper.
Well, now that you're totally educated, Councilman Allen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a storage area network from CDWG, which is a buy board approved company in the amount of $90,000, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for work to begin.
I'll make that motion, and in fact, I've had a system go down before, I want to take this out.
We have a motion by Councilman Perkel. Needs a second, please.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Parson. Any further discussion regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Let's take a look at item number eight now. Consider and adopt a resolution acknowledging the anticipated formal closing of runway 14-32 at the Granberry Regional Airport. The reason this is before you, council members, the FAA come to find out has been holding up the process of moving forward with our expansion project at the, for the construction for the new runway, because they determined that because we have no control tower, and if this project proceeds, we would have two runways, they've been needing some sort of formal action by the city to state that we would go along with closing of the runway. We met with the airport board, and they brought forward a letter, which is in your packet, recommending to accept the closure of the existing runway. And what this means is, we can now utilize the old runway. You heard earlier about ramp fund monies? Those ramp fund dollars of $50,000 of matching dollars come to available every year to the airport. These old runway can serve as a taxiway and a new hangar location. Can you go to that next slide on the presentation, please? Can you go to that next slide on the presentation, please? What you see here in the green is you see, uh, a proposed new hangar areas, as well as up there in the purple, is that right, Keith?
That's right, the, the dark blue purple is the existing old runway, and by closing that runway, that'll develop a whole lot of area on the west side of that runway, and as you said, you'll be able to use the runway as a taxiway. You also have the east end that could be developed, or the south end, the southeast end, that could be developed, first commercial business and whatever.
And that's the items in green you're talking about there?
Actually, it's not shown on there, it's actually in here, it's to the far right corner.
Okay.
On my right corner.
All right. So, you're talking at the end of the existing runway?
At the end, at the end of existing runway.
Uh-huh. And, and your proposal is we could utilize that for some industrial growth?
I, I think it'd be a very good location, uh, once we close that runway. It's right adjacent to the Highway 377 business.
This, this goes right hand in hand with the expansion of the runway.
It, it does.
By closing this runway, we no longer have a safety issue FAA is concerned with. Uh, what they're looking for from, from, what they're looking for from council is a resolution. So, in your packet, gentlemen, we have a resolution, uh, so, at this time, entertain a motion.
Yes, I'm moved that we adopt the resolution, approve the resolution acknowledging the anticipated formal closing of runway 14-32 at the Granberry Regional Airport.
We have a motion by Councilman Tyra, needs a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parson. Any further discussion regarding this?
We don't have to put a date on it or anything, Keith, it's just when we close, right?
That's exactly right, Councilman. It will not be closed until the new runway is operational, and then we will close it immediately after that.
And then we'll have a formal opening of the new runway, and at the same time, we'll have a, a commemorative, uh, uh, closing of the old runway.
And the one thing that wasn't said, Mayor, I'd like to say, there's $5 million attached to this.
Five million dollars?
Five million dollars. And they've agreed pretty well to, that two and a half million they were going to separate in two different years, to actually give us that five million in 2014.
And that keeps us right on target for an opening in 2015.
Exactly.
Because, as you mentioned, they were going to split those dollars up and just...
In two different years.
Doll them out to us a couple of, 250 a pop, so, uh, with, with that, all, all this discussion being said, all in favor of adopting a resolution to close Granberry Regional Airport runway 14-32, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us down to item number nine. Consider and approve amendments to Chapter 3 Building Regulations of the City of Granberry Code of Ordinances to Adopt FEMA Flood Plane Management Measures. Gentlemen, I don't know if you made it up here, but, uh, during a recent FEMA visit to Granberry, they, uh, also took time to talk with us about the flood plane management plans and their maps, the flood plane insurance rate maps, and at that time, they asked where we stood on adopting the FEMA flood plane management regulations into our building code, and said that we had a deadline approaching, that it had to be adopted by August 16th. Well, that rushed us through the channels, and what you have before us is, uh, an adoption to our building code, building regulations, to adopt that, uh, flood plane thing. And what it actually amounts to is, there are existing areas within the city limits of Granberry that do flood occasionally, and as a result, these homeowners have been relying on FEMA dollars for flood, flood damage. And they can't get flood insurance if we don't have this adoption in our, uh, building regulations. So, with that being said, entertain a motion to amend the Chapter 3 Building Regulations to adopt the FEMA flood plane management measures as presented.
Still move.
We have a motion by Councilman Allen, a second by Councilman Perkel. Any other questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, all, huh, if you want to oppose, say nay. Motion carries. At this time, I now declare that the Granberry City Council is convened in open session, and that all members are present except Nan Hewlett, and the city council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney. We shall return, I can't promise it shortly, but we will be back. We'll reconvene in open session. There being no action taken back in, uh, executive session, we bring nothing before us as we come out. There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.